I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting was noticed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This commission acts in review and recommending capacity for comprehensive plan amendments, text amendments to the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance, rezonings, and plan developments. The commission has decision-making authority on road name change requests, public project reviews, appeals administrative decisions on final platton subdivision matters, as well as other matters pursuant to chapter 29, title six, section six dash twenty-nine dash three forty of the Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended. If you wish to speak at today's meeting, you should have signed in in the hall before we came in and remind everybody to not talk over each other so we can get a good recording of the meeting. I'm Cindy Floyd. I'm the chair. To my right, we have Pete Pilatus, Luke Morris, Gary Lassane, and Adam McConnell. To my left, we have David Kent, Warwick Jones, Logan Davis, and Susan Cox. Also seated to my right is the commission attorney, Mark Bell. And seated to my left, Joel Evans, Director of Zoning and Planning. Joel, would you please introduce your staff?
Yes. Andrew Melisick White, the Deputy Director, Marshay Miller, Wynne Carlisle, Stephanie Ondo, Monica Eustace, Lee Ziegler, and Nikki Gremble.
Okay. Remind you again that in order to get a good recording of the meeting for the minutes, please speak loudly and clearly into your microphones, and please do not talk over one another. The first item in the agenda is the approval of the minutes from February tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion and a second?
Abode.
I would like to request an amendment to just the workshop minutes.
Okay.
If I could make a motion to amend the workshop minutes, the second line of the first paragraph of the twelfth page of the PC packet from the last meeting, at the end of where it says, "Help with affordability," to add, "There is a distinction between good density and bad density, where bad density is one hundred percent car-centric, creating a negative public opinion of all density due to increased traffic." That's the end of the requested amendment, and that's just a clarification on my comments. And on the YouTube video, it's at about one hour, twenty-seven minutes, and thirty seconds, if that's helpful.
Okay. Any objection?
Good job.
I printed it out this time.
Okay.
I accept a member.
Okay. All right. Madam, please call the roll.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lassane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pilatus?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
The next item on the agenda is a request to amend table five point one-two-point-five, Parker's Ferry Community Overlay Zoning District Use Table, to add vehicle storage as an allowed use for the business service node and commercial properties in accordance with special exception procedures. Marshay Miller is going to give us the information on that.
Good afternoon. So as stated, this is a request to amend table five point twelve-point-five of the Parker's Ferry Community Overlay Zoning District to add vehicle storage as an allowed use within business service nodes and commercial properties in accordance with special exception procedures. This is the amendment, I'm sorry, not the amendment, but the proposed use added to the use table here. And then this is the special exception approval criteria that would need to be followed. And then for the zoning history, prior to the adoption of the Parker's Ferry overlay in two thousand and seventeen, the properties that later became incorporated into the overlay were designated for the rural cultural community protection, future land use, and the comp plan. The overlay district is the first example of the implementation of the future land use designation through zoning. Here, and then also the process, I'm sorry. The process to develop the overlay zoning district included working closely with community members and stakeholders who felt that residential density should remain low and new development should respect existing land use pattern, which is largely ruled with historically and culturally significant properties. However, they recognized the need for employment opportunities and wanted to allow business, but limit the scale and scope to remain consistent with existing development. As part of the Parker's Ferry overlay planning effort, a supporting document entitled Parker's Ferry Community Plan was included as a supporting resource within the comprehensive plan, which included the results of the community needs assessment and provides recommendations and strategies developed in coordination with the area residents to address issues identified by the survey. The Parker's Ferry overlay implements the Community Plan Strategy two-point-one, which states, "Adopt amendments to the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulation Ordinance, including but not limited to an overlay zoning district as applicable." The PFO includes a residential area and business service nodes and commercial properties. The uses in each identified and determined by the community, allowed uses within a residential area include single-family detached housing by right and some other low-density recreational, civic, and institutional uses, allowed either conditionally or through the special exception process. The business service nodes and commercial properties allow for more intense office and commercial uses, such as healthcare uses, animal services, administrative and professional offices, and retail sales. Higher intensity uses, such as gas stations and resource extraction, require approval through the special exception process. Building sizes are limited to five thousand square feet of gross area in the business service nodes and commercial properties. Properties within the business service nodes and commercial properties are primarily located off arterial roads throughout the Parker's Ferry area, including Savannah Highway, Old Jacksonboro Road, and Highway one-seventy-four. All properties within the PFO that are not zone business service node or commercial are zoned for residential. Residential properties have a density of one dwelling unit per acre. Some allow uses within the business service nodes and commercial properties include agricultural sales or services, medical office, food sales, and retail sales. Other more intense uses can be allowed conditionally or by special exception approval from the According to section three-point-three-point-six of the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, text amendments to the ordinance may be approved or approved with conditions if the following approval criteria have been met and the applicant provided responses to all approval criteria. Based on the applicant's responses, the approval criteria may have been met, therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment to allow vehicle storage uses, if approved through the special exception procedures of the ZLDR, with the condition that such uses shall only be allowed on business service node and commercial properties that have frontage on Highway seventeen south, Savannah Highway. Six comments in opposition, no comments in support, were received, and this request was noticed as required. And that's it.
Thank you for that report. We will now hear public comments. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes. Please state your name and address before giving your comments.
Christopher.
LaRue.
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 Yeah.
LaRue.
Can I add this into, I don't know, service? I have several businesses and residents around my property that have accepted and want that for their community. I have three businesses and one residential person registered next to me.
You can hand it to Andrew Melisick White.
It's a standard note stating they agree with the acceptance of the property being what I've just reported.
Okay, it's three different.
Am I still on my two minutes?
Yeah, go ahead. We'll start it now.
All right, good. Just from five fourteen-one, statement of findings, Parker's Ferry Community Overlay District, these areas were initially identified through a community-wide planning effort. The whole community came into effort to first implementation of land and use designation. That was in two thousand and seventeen. Two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty-five is far away. So what I'd like to say is that the growth of the community, the building further south on seventeen, especially the frontage road of Highway seventeen, is impairing existing and non-existing. Hillcrest, let me throw this out there, is a community that is two hundred and fifty homes, being built less than one-tenth of a mile from my property, my property next to the church. They are not allowed, I can also hand that into, their covenants and restrictions for two hundred and fifty homes do not allow recreational vehicles, trailers, boats, or watercrafts in their community. They have to park those crafts, vehicles, and recreational, not commercial, but recreational units somewhere. I propose building on my one acre, an RV and boat storage, well-lit, well-secure, gated with a code, very easy access off of Highway seventeen. It is direct access north and southbound from Highway seventeen, so there would be no delays in traffic. And we do have a off-shoulder parking area for them to stop, put in their code, and pull into the gated area. They said, "The participants also recognize that there is a need to allow a limited selection of appropriate businesses." Again, this is in two thousand and seventeen. We are in two thousand and twenty-five. We have to, we do have to reassess our appropriate businesses at this time. And with the new community being involved, as well as the old community and all the residents in there, they do also have to have appropriate storage for their recreational craft.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for this speaker?
Yes, sir.
Could you describe your boat storage? I mean, are we just talking about the storage of boats on the ground, or are we going to have a?
Oh, no, sir. Boats on trailers, RVs, boats on trailers, RVs, vehicles that are backed in and stored, jet skis.
So it's all going to be on the ground?
Recreational watercraft on trailers.
Okay. How many boats do you think you'll be?
My lot provides twenty-five, and I've reduced the usage from the back area, that buffer zone on the back of my property, to provide foliage for council, just to make sure that there's plants there as well.
And how many miles away is your site from the landing?
The closest landing?
Yes.
I do not know. Not offhand. No, sir.
What, are we just guessing, one mile, two miles?
I would say the St. John's, there's several. There's so many in that area because, of course, Charleston is about seventy-five percent water, so they're all over the place. Yes, sir.
At this river, and near the landing.
Anybody else?
Yeah, one more question. You currently have a business on the property?
Not yet. Well, I own C N K Property Holdings, and that is the business that holds the land.
Okay. There's not a current repair facility?
Nothing's occurring right now. There was a stop work order until I got this figured out, and then I just stopped everything.
Okay.
I had half a fence built, and that was it. And I said, "Let me figure out this way."
Adam, did you have a question?
Just a quick question. When the initial conversations happened with the overlay district, I see that traditional storage units are not approved, allowable land use, I think, in this section. Was there discussion about those uses, both boat, vehicle? I mean, a decade ago now, but I just wonder if you remember, Joel, having conversations about that?
I don't recall that specific conversation. We just recorded from the community what they expressed to us, what was acceptable to them, what they'd like to see, but I can't recall if that was specifically discussed.
Thank you.
Joel. I guess if they built something like this, what's required for buffers and landscaping if they do a?
I believe a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer is what you start with, with a commercial use adjacent to a non-commercial use. I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with exactly what staff discussed with the applicant as a potential buffer, but that would be the starting point, would be twenty-five feet.
Yes. Seventy-fifty-three, which is like right down from you, do you know what that is there?
Is that a tire tire?
It's a John Brillinger?
Yes, sir. Tire tire.
It's a tire place?
It's a tire place. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Repairs, things of that sort?
They change tractor-trailer tires, so they actually pull onto that same meeting. I'm proposing that my, that vehicles that are going to go into my property?
Okay.
Pull onto. It's that same meeting on the side of the highway?
Yep.
And eighteen-wheelers to large vehicles?
Are already coming in there and doing it?
Tractor trailers, triaxles, things of that nature. He does larger, larger scope of work.
Okay. Thank you.
All the way down to your, you know, fifteen-hundred pickup truck, but.
Let's have a quick clarification from staff, that this is just to approve it being a special exception use in the Parker's Ferry overlay district. So the applicant, if this is approved, would have to then go through BCA to get the special exception, and even then, it can only be within the commercial portion of the Parker's Ferry overlay. So there's like multiple layers of this.
Correct. Well, yeah, I think the text amendment is multiple-layered criteria. Number one, it's got to be commercial in the overlay, as you said. Number two, it can only occur on Highway seventeen, so that's another filter. And then, if you meet those two, then you can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to request a special exception.
I bought the property under pretense, and it does say in the filings that when I bought it, that it is business commercial. So it's business commercial and on frontage of Highway seventeen. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and so basically, we're just voting on whether or not this would be an added use for Parker's Ferry overlay as a special exception.
I think Andrew has something to do with it.
It just as a clarification, the applicant didn't include the part about only on Highway seventeen. That's a staff-suggested condition, so that those types of, if it's approved, those types of uses can't be down further into the community. Yeah.
Anybody else?
I have a question. You mentioned that this would further the public welfare by decreasing the amount of HOA fines. Is this a use? I think the answer is probably no. Is this a use that the people who've lived there for a long time want to see, or is this simply because of the new development accident?
Well, they could possibly, because what I think is that a lot of people in that particular area have large land, heirs' land, or other properties, that they have their boat, they have their RV parked in the backyard, and they don't want it there. They'd rather have it somewhere else, so they have their own backyard. They have something that they can enjoy. So, again, I'm just trying to facilitate to not just the new community, but the old community as well, saying, "Hey, if you do want to put it there, please be my guest."
Okay. Has anybody actually expressed an interest that lives in the old community?
Not that I know of, except for the one residential person that I have on record.
Okay. Pardon?
What I do say is at least two hundred and fifty homes are being built. If ten percent of those have an RV, or a boat, or a sea craft?
They don't have any place to park it.
They would have to, they would have to park it somewhere.
Yep.
And why not closest enough to a secure area, then, right across the street from their properties?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
John Cobb?
Am I done?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
My name is John Cobb, Councilor. Probably shouldn't have touched this thing. The council members and the chair, good evening. John Cobb, fifty-seven fifty-three, Marcell Road. I'm here because this proposal has too many uncertainties. I heard the young lady said several times that the business should meet with the community, said work clearly with the community. We have a meeting every month, and we have not seen any specifics. So when we got this in the mail, it says, "Storage of vehicles." We don't know whether it's heavy equipment. We don't know whether it's moderate. I'm appreciative that the gentleman said today that is, you know, RV and water recreation, but we didn't have that information. We welcome anyone that wants to come and speak to us at the Wiltown Center, but we are worried about the unintended consequences. Right now, he's talking about two hundred-plus houses on seventeen, one acre of storage space. What happens when more of those houses get recreation vehicles? And he needs more space. There's a spread. Right now, if the county, if you, as a council board, vote for this, and it's established, and the precedence has been set, what's going to stop? Other vehicles, heavy equipment, from coming into the area, eroding the road, possibly landscaping, and, you know, you've got big vehicles beeping six, five o'clock in the morning to go in, if this is established as a storage place. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the speaker?
Good afternoon. My name is Willie Johnson. I'm also a board member of the Wiltown Community Center. County Council Joe Boykin is our district county council in our area, and he knows all about it. We have a meeting, like the young man just said, Brother Cobb just said, every fourth Monday at seven o'clock, and everyone is welcome to come out. We don't know anything that's going on. We all received a letter, but like he just mentioned, you know, you've got all these heavy equipment. And the thing about it is, when people, I mean, I know that heavy equipment has to start out early in the morning, like three, four, or five o'clock in the morning, and it distracts a lot of people, with the two hundred homes that they're building that's up in the Parker's Ferry area, but it don't serve us any good. And we just need, we have an open policy, the Sheriff's Department, the EMS, and everyone use our facility on Parker's Ferry Road. We keep it open for them, for the bathrooms, or whatever they need to do, but we like to know more about what's going on in our community. And when we receive these letters, we come out to try to participate in it and make sure that we get some of the things in our community that benefit the community. But right now, this is not helping us at all. So we just like the county council and you guys that's on the board to look into these things. One acre, I mean, I can't put but one house on an acre, but yet, though, you can park fifteen, or twenty, or thirty vehicles. Heavy equipment, to me, is not fair. And the people in the community don't want it, because I'm not saying that he can't do it, but one acre, I mean, I wouldn't try to buy one acre to put thirty-five or forty heavy equipment trucks on it. So I'm asking the board to look into it. I'm asking the board to look into it a little further, and then get back to us. We at the Wiltown Community Center, and we are all open to all suggestions, and we need to find out really what's going on in our community. Thank you.
I also brought two people along with me that own pocket in the community.
Would the applicant agree to postponing this, so that you can actually speak to the members of the community and explain to them what you're doing?
How do I go about?
You can.
How do I go about visiting each and every person of that?
No, he said that they have the community meetings every month.
They're an organized, very organized community?
Okay.
And participated heavily in the overlay zoning district?
Okay.
From what I'm hearing from the representatives, they did not know anything about this at all until we did our required letters that were sent out. So I think what, to start over, so to speak, you need to get with the community, schedule a meeting that they have at the Wiltown Community, because, as you heard, you need to address this issue of heavy vehicles, you need to address some other issues that they may have.
Okay.
Because I think there's some misinformation?
Misunderstanding.
A misunderstanding.
Yeah, and if they don't understand what I propose to have there, they.
But that's, you're the applicant. That's up to you to get with the community and describe that to them. Okay?
I want to put on record just a couple things, as I made notes real quick. Sir?
That's up to the board.
I can't tell how many houses will be built in that area. Lennar, D R Horton, Centex, they all build there. They all will get their way. They will be building there, between Megget, the new development in Megget, and now this one in Hillcrest. Need to facilitate what homes have been approved. So what has been approved are the two hundred and fifty homes that have been approved. That is part of your community, whether you like it or not, old or new.
Okay, we get that.
Okay.
But these folks are.
They're city and town ordinance.
The old community, these folks represent what you.
I'll be happy to meet with them. Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to get this on record, that's all. City and town ordinance have ordinances for heavy equipment usage, when you can start it, when you can stop it. So that's already taken care of, I would assume, so, right?
Correct, but I think that, I think that it would go a long ways if you met with the community.
I would. I just wanted, I just wanted to get it.
No, but you're correct, and I will reiterate what you just said to the community members that are here.
I'm happy to be with them, and I'll express everything to them.
The use table that the applicant is requesting to be amended, there's a separate, this would not allow heavy equipment, heavy industrial equipment. This is just for boat, RVs, and.
Watercraft.
And watercraft.
Yes, sir.
It's very specific in the use table. However, I know that you need to talk to the applicant to have some level of comfort of what he's proposing.
Super happy to meet with them, and I'll find out the next date that they're meeting, and I'll.
And then after that occurs, get back with staff, and we'll start scheduling you for the next available.
Yeah, one more thing?
Yes.
One acre is the standard for building one house in that area, correct?
I believe so, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Doesn't tell you how many cars you can park on it. Just tells you you can build one house and seventy-eight cars, but, just saying. I'm going to meet with them, and I'm absolutely, I'm absolutely going to meet with them, and I'm not trying to be a smart butt here.
You're right, right. Hey, look, as staff, we've been out to the community several times.
Yes, sir.
Just as a word of advice from a staff member?
Uh-huh.
Go with an open mind and be.
A one-hundred.
And be open to whatever the community may have suggestions of, okay?
How does it re-adjourn for me to meet after I meet with them?
This commission can, you request that it be deferred, and then this commission can grant that request.
To meet with them?
Correct.
Deferred to meet with them, and that, yes, yes, sir. That's what I request.
Okay.
All right.
Abode.
Do we have, okay. We have a motion?
So what is the motion?
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing them, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lassane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pilatus?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay. So your application is deferred. When would he be able to get back after having a meeting with the community?
It depends on when the community meeting is and what he decides to come back with.
Can they come up and tell me?
They can tell you right now.
They meet regularly.
The public comment's over. He just wants to know when the next community meeting is.
The next meeting is Monday, March twenty-fourth, seven p.m. at the Wiltown Community Center.
Okay.
Five-seven-seven-four, Parker's Ferry Road, Avenue Run, two-nine-four-two-six.
After that meeting, sir?
Yes.
Let staff know, and then we will work on getting you at the next available planning commission meeting.
Staff will be there?
Yes. We still have to meet our notification. We still have to meet our notification requirements.
That's my thing.
So I'm not sure when, it will probably be the May meeting, okay?
So that whole list of dates that I got are now deferred?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. So we're not going to hear that. Let's move on to the next agenda item, since they're not going to go to county council.
Yep.
Okay, all right. The next agenda item is the election of officers for the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. The Planning Commission rules and procedures state that before the close of the March Commission meeting, the current chair shall call for an open nominations, and members will select by majority vote of the membership one of the members as chair and then one of its members as vice chair for the new year. The newly elected chair and vice chair shall begin their terms upon completion of the meetings in which they are elected. Are there any nominations for Planning Commission Chair?
I nominate Cindy Floyd for chair and Pete Palatos for vice chair.
They're nominating a slate, if anybody had any objection. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are you sure you want it?
Why not? Okay, call the roll.
Okay, we're voting for slate for Floyd and Palatos.
Palatos.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I guess, all right. The last item on the agenda is Chair's remarks. The community meeting to discuss the draft of the 10-mile Community Overlay District will take place at the 10-mile Community Center, located at 3926 Seafood Road in Awandaw on Saturday, March 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.? Is that, okay, till noon, okay?
Two hours.
Two hours, yeah.
Not 12.
Ooh, that's a long meeting, okay. All right, so if anybody wants to attend, you have the information. All right. There's no further business. This meeting of the Charleston County Planning Commission stands adjourned. The Planning Commission will hold its next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, April 14th, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. in council chambers. All right. I just don't understand.